I thought.
Okay. All standing, thank you councillors. Welcome councillors, members of the executive and members of the public in the gallery, which there are none, but I'm sure there are those watching online. The Swan Hill Royal City Council acknowledges the traditional custodians of the land on which we meet and pays its respects to their elders past and present. Councillor Young, prayer please.
We beseech you Lord that we may be granted wisdom, understanding and sincerity of purpose in the decisions we are called on to make for the welfare of the people of the rural city of Swan Hill.
Thank you. I know we sit here. Apologies and leaves of absence, Miss Carver.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councillor King is on leave of absence and Councillor McKay is an apology for this meeting.
Thank you, we of course have directors present, we have our acting CEO Roseanne Carver, we have Heather Green, our Director of Planning and Development, and Bruce Myers, who is our Director of Community and Cultural Services, and we also have Kate Jewell with us as well.
Can I all move that the apologies be accepted?
Oh, thank you very much, Councillor Jeffrey, second up. I should be following the screen online rather than what I've got in front of me. All those in favour, thank you. And now we've gone through the introduction of the directors and the officers present. We do have two apologies from directors and that is Heather and Svetla today. Who are on leave? Helen, Helen, sorry. Confirmation of minutes. The scheduled minutes of the council meeting held on the 15th of February and the unscheduled meeting of council held on the 22nd of February 2022.
Yeah, move.
Thank you, Councillor McPhee and seconded, Councillor Jeffrey, thank you very much. All those in favour? Thank you. Disclosures of conflict of interest. Do we have any?
I have disclosed a conflict of interest on item B 22.16, using development dwelling farming zone affected by land subject to erosion overlay located at number 27 River Road. This is where I live on River Road and I join the proposed new water treatment plan from the position of this house where it goes one way or another might affect my property might matter, so I can have a conflict of interest.
Okay, thank you, Councillor Moore. When we get to that report you'll be able to leave the room. Thank you. Joint letters and reading of petitions.
Do we have them?
Terrific. Public question time. Miss Carver. Please.
Yes, Stella. Thank you very much.
Can I move a motion to be suspending standing orders, Miss Mayor?
Thank you, Councillor McPhee, seconded. Thank you, Councillor Jeffrey, all those in favour? Thank you.
Sorry, I'm just keeping up with that.
That's okay.
We have two questions on notice. The first question is regarding residential land Robbenvale. And the question says, 19th anniversary Drive Robbenvale is zoned general residential. It also carries a development plan overlay. The area of the property is 6.16 hectares. The majority of the property is currently planted with grapevines and used for primary production. Is council aware of any plans to develop this property for residential use? Such a development would relieve the shortage of land for housing in Robbenvale. The response is no, council is not aware of any current plans to develop this property for residential use. The second question, both questions are from Alison Black from Robbenvale, I should have said. The second question relates to the budget 2122. The budget 202122 lists the Pioneer Settlement as a service area under 2.1 strategic objective economic growth services. The net budget figure for 2122 is shown as $887,000, in effect a subsidy of $887,000. Can council confirm if these funds are also used to financially support the tourist information centre located at the corner of McCray and Kuluas streets, the Swan Hill Regional Art Gallery located at Horseshoe Bend, as well as the Pioneer Settlement located at 125 Monash Drive? If so, what is the financial split with respect to funding between these three organisations? If more organisations are funded under the banner of Pioneer Settlement, can council identify them and advise the financial support provided? And the response is, I can confirm that the 202122 budget for the Pioneer Settlement is $887,000, which is the net cost to council. This cost relates entirely to the Pioneer Settlement and includes income of around $50,000 from commercial leases. The tourist information centre and the art gallery are not budgeted under the Pioneer Settlement, nor is any other programme. Thank you.
Thank you, Miss Carver. Can I have a motion to resume standing orders? Thank you, Councillor Jeffrey. Can I have a second up? Thank you, Councillor McPhee, all those in favour? Thank you. Moving on to reports. Section B, report B 22.1 for car park shade structures at Robbenvale IGA. Miss Green, I believe you're delivering this report?
No, I'm not sharing structures. As does council, council has been briefed on this widely through assemblies. A request and through a petition was made to council to pursue working with the IGA in Robbenvale to have shade structures for the car park that council owns about a third of at the rear of the supermarket. Council has done that over the last 12 months or so and the IGA has said solar panel shade structures are not affordable, but they have sort quotes or sort one quote for just normal shade sales for the car park. And the price is given there which is about $550,000, council share would be around $215,000, which is about $3,500 per car station. Council noting in the report that this amount of money is not budgeted for, it's not in our 10 year plan either. Three options are proposed, that we invest in the project of installing shade sale structures on the council land and we identify projects works which will be deferred to accommodate this unbudgeted expenditure, or not proceed with the installation and allow the IGA to store shade on their land for their customers, or option three, council include the project in the 10 year major projects programme in the unfunded section and decide on possible funding at next year's budget review. It's recommended that that is what we do, that we put it in the 10 years major projects list as unfunded and decide on funding at the next budget review and write to the petitioner, Alison Black, informing her of council's decision.
Thank you, Miss Green. Questions councillors? Councillor Jeffrey?
Thank you, Miss Green. In regards to shade sales that we currently provide, so pools, playgrounds, sport equipment areas, do we have any strategic document that says we are now currently applying shade sales to?
We certainly do for playgrounds, so we continually try to either upgrade existing ones or provide new ones for new playgrounds, but not for car parks.
But in terms of infrastructure across the municipality, do we have, are we just focusing on two or three areas because we are, do we have a study or plan of where it says this is what we'd like to do across the municipality within playgrounds, car parks, skate parks?
I think we are not the subject matter expert on this. I'm pretty sure we do for playgrounds and things like skate parks, those sorts of things, but certainly not for car parks.
Possibly swimming pools too, yeah, I'd have to check.
Yeah.
Councillor Young?
Yeah, my question is probably similar to Councillor Jeffrey's in that, do we have any similar situations like that, whether it's in Robbenvale or Swan Hill, where they could turn around and say we've done it for them, why can't you do it for us?
My understanding, we have no public car parks in the municipality with shade structures. So in Swan Hill, we certainly have the Aldine Car Park has some shade structures, it's the only one I can think of, which is obviously done by the property owner or proprietor of the business.
No, it's no council situation, like the council would own the land and then, yeah, okay, thank you.
Councillor McPhee?
Thank you, Mary. I don't think we can be able to answer this, Miss Green, but I'll ask the question. Has anyone looked at what number of cars actually use the car park at any one time? And is the car park ever full? Because my trips up there, on numerous times, at very different times of the day, I've never seen the car park full.
I would agree with you, anecdotally I'd say that as well, and our part of the car park is the furthest away from the building. But not that I'm aware of in terms of checking the use of that car park.
And the trees that are planted in the car park, is that in our part of the land or is that in IGA's?
I don't know, so.
I understand it's in our part of the car park councillor and anecdotally again, it's fairly popular in terms of a place to park within the car park.
Councillor Moore?
Yeah, my question was very similar to Councillor McPhee's last one there in the number of trees, we'd have to rip out those trees to put shade cells, we've got natural shade there. Well, secondly, council invest annually a significant amount of money into trees, I believe, 45,000 a year, which is natural shade and probably better for the environment than artificial shade, I would suggest. So council is doing a lot anyway in terms of shade and shade sales across the municipality.
Any other questions councillors? Could I have a motion please?
As per the recommendation.
Thank you, Councillor Moore, as per the recommendation, can I have a second up? No, second up.
I'll move another motion then, Miss Mayor. I'll move as per option two, the council decide not to proceed with the installation of shade sale structures on the council land and leave it to IGA to install the shade on their land for their customers. Option two.
Option two, which is?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Councillor Jeffrey.
And obviously part of the right to the petitioner as well.
Yeah, so the first one lasts. Well, that's been done, would you like to speak to the motion, Councillor McPhee?
Yeah, look, I can sympathise with Miss Black in relation to the sun, we have the sun water across our municipality. Unfortunately, council can't implement projects into a 10 year major projects plan through petitions, that is not the progress is to do appropriately. We do have shade in the area, we have, as has been discussed in the questions here, already that there are trees in our part of the car park. There are no other shade sales across any other car parks within the municipality. If we start doing this ad hoc without a proper plan, I don't think it's appropriate, we have trees down here. For the benefit of IGA, and IGA are looking at putting their shade sales into their part of the car park. The car park is never full, so I think by IGA doing their 60% of the, or 66% of the car park with shade sales will be ample for the people in Robbenvale. And I think it's up to individual businesses to vouch for it from this to attract their own customers, it's not our role to do this. And as I said before, there's no planned shade sales across any car park, we do look at the vulnerable people in our community, the children, and we are looking at playgrounds, which is appropriate. I think it's, we live in a hot environment and it's a case of learning to live with that and finding the best place to park in that time. And don't be as long in this supermarket as need to be in the hot sun for that long. Thank you, Miss Mayor.
Thank you, Councillor McPhee. Councillor Jeffrey?
Yeah, thank you, I'll stop the motion. But I think in terms of providing shade sales to our community, we should be providing where people are congregating to undertake activities, so at our pools, at our playgrounds, at our play parks for the kids' activities etc. The fact that the cost for councillors to be involved based on the quote from Robbenvale IGA would require council to go up a tender for the, to undertake the work, we couldn't just hand over the bit over $200,000 there for Robbenvale IGA to do it on our behalf, we have financial improvement policies and procedures in place that we'd have to follow, which mainly there would be two different contractors doing the same work if we were to undertake this work. And in terms of adding it to our 10 year project plan, I'd rather say let's take a more holistic approach for the whole municipality on what our priorities are for putting shade sales in in terms of all our pools, all our playgrounds, all our sporting equipment, and not just sending out a couple of locations and fully appreciate the petitioners come in. But I'm sure that installation involved will be a real benefit for the community.
Thank you, Councillor Jeffrey. Any other speakers for the motion? Any speakers against the motion? Councillor McPhee, do you like to close?
I will close, thanks, Miss McPhee. Just one thing, look, council do invest in a lot of things that come at a cost to council with all our paths, reserves, all this type of stuff, we don't make money from them. So our budget is only goes so far, we've got to be very careful how we spend our money. There are a lot of things on the major projects plan that will bring in economic benefit to the community, and I think they're more important than shade sales in a car park for a business. Thank you, Miss Mayor.
Thank you, Councillor McPhee. We'll take it to a vote, all those in favour of the motion? Passed unanimously. Report B 22.15, decriminalisation of sex works, Swan Hill Royal City Council, advocacy to the Municipal Association of Victoria. Miss Green, please.
I'm going to hand it over to Kate June to hold this one.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Councillors may be aware that on the 22nd of February, the Sex Work Decriminalisation Bill was passed by the Victorian Government of Parliament, this is in turn received by Royal Ascend on the 1st of March of this year. It is widely acknowledged that there is validity in the decriminalisation of sex work in Victoria in terms of the maximisation of sex workers' safety, health and human rights, and also by the reduction of stigmatisation and the fear of criminal repercussions for sex workers. However, it is regarded that this act has been entered into without adequate detail being provided on the implementation of the act and the adequate recognition of the impacts that affluents will have on Victorian communities. So by decriminalisation, that will make consensual sex work legal and criminal offences will no longer apply to sex-based, street-based sex work across Victoria. There's also been foreshadowed within the act that the form, content and size of advertising of sex services, which is currently controlled. which is currently controlled by regulation. Um, however, there has been no detail provided, um, in of these proposed new regulations. Information has been provided, however, um, of how, um, the planning system will change to, um, adopt, uh, what could be considered a much more lenient approach to the citing of what reformally made proper. Um, a term which has been replaced, um, with the term sex services premises within the planning scheme. Um, in that, uh, sex service premises will have, will fall under the same definition as shop. Um, and be subject to the same rules that, um, that shops currently are. Um, and in places where shops are most prevalent, being in the commercial one zone, um, the shop is not required to obtain a planning permit. Um, providing size limitations are met and they're quite generous size limitations. So that means, um, in terms of practical examples, that, um, we could have sex service premises, um, located next to shops where young people, um, gather or, or visit, um, or people that may be potentially offended by that service. Um, also of concern is the, um, is the ideal to, uh, include sexual services under home-based, uh, business provisions. Uh, meaning that, um, up to a third of a normal place of residence, um, can be used for a sexual service premise. Uh, for someone who, that is their principal place of residence, uh, with the addition of two additional sex workers. And, uh, that can occur without a planning permit. Um, and then a permit could be granted to allow up to two hundred square metres and an additional worker um, to offer sexual services within our residential areas. It's been stated, um, that monitoring enforcement will fall back, um, to local government, which is a particular concern for small like councils such as ours that do not have a dedicated enforcement arm. Um, another, um, area of concern is that, um, people are allowed to solicit um, for sex work outside, uh, places where children, um, uh, can be present, like schools or childcare centres or a place of worship after seven P M in the evening, um, to six A M in the morning. Um, also what is, um, with regard to be a lack of implementation, uh, detail is how the public health regulatory framework, um, will be addressed. Currently, it's managed by the Department of Health, um, particularly in areas like inspections, ultras, infection control, um, generally, general cleanliness and the hygiene, um, of sex workers. Um, and it's been alluded to by the state government that these responsibilities will fall back, uh, to local government. Um, placing once again, um, uh, more impact on already constrained and, and, um, stretched services. So, um, in some way, um, particularly with regards to home-based sex, uh, services, um, is the concern for child safety responsibilities, the safety of home sex workers, um, potential advertising in residential areas, um, solicitation, um, in places where children may gather. Um, in regards to, um, sex services being classified the same as shops, um, there, there is concern, a concern about laundering, um, in these areas, uh, advertising signage and the disparity between what potential signage could be and community expectations and norms. Um, the impacts of other retail premises that are in the location of sex service premises, uh, parking provision, there's no, uh, no, been no mention of that. Um, public health preservation and, and, um, potential for impacts from alcohol and other drugs. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Miss Jewel. Questions, councillors? councillor McFay?
Yeah, um, yeah, Miss Jewel, just in relation to the report, um, well, the act has been passed, you say, but without adequate detail on implementation and recognition and planning controls. So is that what we're looking, asking the government to look at that implementation side of it? So that can be amended to make it a bit safer for communities?
True, you, Madam Mayor, certainly councillor McFay, that's, um, would be paramount that we do ask for, um, more clarity, um, in the first instance. And then, um, I guess a, a checking of, of any proposed operations.
Thank you.
Any other questions, councillors? I have one for a motion. In the report, you've got another change that the act allows which could cause significant community disquiet is the ability of a person to solicit or invite any person to engage in sex work in a place where children are present or, or near a place of worship after seven P M to six A M. Does this contradict the child safe standards? Is it, in your opinion?
Um, Madam Mayor, I may defer to Mr Miles.
Yeah. Mr Miles?
Through you, Mayor. Um, when we discussed this recently, I sent a request through to the Commission for Children and Young People, which is the body that oversees the child safe standards, um, detailing, you know, which of these acts, uh, takes precedence. And I received an automatic reply and I received another reply on Friday saying that they have someone who's actually looking at this piece of work and they'll get back to us. So whatever information we get back could be used in whatever response council decides to put forward. But it was certainly raised by officers as a concern.
Thank you. Any other questions, councillors? If not, could I have a motion, please?
You'll move a motion as per the recommendation, Miss Mayor, but can I add one dot point in there?
Sure. Dot point being?
Being, um, just to include, I think we need to include, um, Fiona Patton, member of the Victorian Legislative Council. As she was, uh, just to make, as her aware of our, i- our concerns as well.
Good point.
There's no, there's no Fiona Patton? Fiona Patton?
Yeah, I see.
Member of the Victorian Legislative Council.
MLC.
MLC, fine. councillor Jeffrey, you second? Thank you. Councillor McFay, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yeah, look, I will, thank you, ma'am. Um, allegedly, sex work is the oldest profession in the world, they tell me. Um, and it's about making work safe for everyone. And this is what this, they're trying to do in this process, which I think, and no one's against that. But it's just where it happens, that's the concern we have. We don't want our communities affected having a sex work, like, um, business next to a school or next to other areas. There's got to be proper planning places in, planning controls in place and adequate detail as to who governs and looks after these places. I think it's not a role of local government to do this, and that's what we've got to push to do, that it doesn't fall back on us. The state government again pushing regularly controls back on local government. I don't want to change the rules or let them look after it. And I'm pleased to say that I think that they're looking at such things as child safe standards in this list as well, which I think that will influence how these regulations are put in place. So I think we just need to voice our concern in relation to this for our community. I think it's not going to have a bigger impact in the country as it may in Metro, but we've still got to protect our communities from this, um, legislation. Thank you.
Thank you councillor McFay. Councillor Jeffrey?
Yeah, thank you. Full of support. The inclusion and the words that councillor McFay put on it. In terms of compliance in Victoria, we've got gambling, a casino, alcohol, which is done by a state, uh, government, if we're authorised inspectors. Um, similar to, uh, animal health, applied security, chemicals standards is sort of done by a state agency. Um, and the Department of Transport who, you know, monitor compliance across trains and networks and buses. So to, if they were to put this back on councils, we're already started to get people, uh, staff with the qualifications and skills into region of Victoria, uh, it's going to be even more difficult to broaden or, uh, establish a, and allow them to ensure compliance in Swan Hill. This is the take off here. Uh, so I think, um, there's a public concern that have been raised around the compliance of the inspection. Uh, but as well as the, some of the other points, a whole lot of there, where, uh, a profit or what we now call the sex service, uh, building office, um, could be set up next to the Tory building town or could be set up multiple ones set up there, you know, one residential street in town. So there needs to be a bit more control, a bit more compliance, and it needs to be led by the state, not just handed over back to the six, like the governor councils in Victoria. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Jeffrey. Any other speakers for the motion? councillor Moore?
Um, just like to add that, you know, we definitely need planning controls, uh, just rather than just, um, ad hoc wherever you like. Um, that's absolutely essential, uh, as an outcome. Um, secondly, a child safety, I think is paramount. And the other list of concerns there, which are quite detailed, um, they, they all have to be addressed, uh, as the regulations to this, uh, act are drafted.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Councillor Leon?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was just going to say, when this was read out, I was quite horrified by the whole thing. Um, when I acknowledge what councillor McFay was saying about being an old occupation, that maybe there is a need for it in some ways, but this just goes way over the top to me and, um, I'm fully supportive of us taking up the issue. Because I'm sure if the wider community knew about this, there would be a total uproar. So, yeah, that's my view.
Thank you councillor Leon. Councillor McFay, would you like to close?
Would you like to, Miss Mayor?
Thank you. We'll put it to a vote. All those in favour of the motion? Passed unanimously. Okay. B twenty two point one six. councillor Moore, you may exit the chamber. Use and development of a dwelling in the farming zone affected by land subject to inundation overlay located at number twenty seven River Road, Swan Hill. Miss Green?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Um, we all know that we need more housing and we all know that there is a need for rural living type housing. And on the face of this application, it would seem that this is a great location for just that. Houses close to the river, close to town. But what's different about this block, um, is that there is also subject to a land, subject to inundation overlay. And I think, um, the Catchment Management Authority says it's likely to be at least one point three metres deep if there's a flood there. Um, and of course, we've recently seen in New South Wales and Southern Queensland, places where, oh, it never floods here, and it's flooded for the first time. That's going to happen across the bay. There will at some stage be a flood where this land is under inundation. Um, we have a levee there that is not maintained. Um, so that will work for a time, but won't work, uh, when the big one comes. Um, it is also located to the northern boundary of land, of land purchased by Lower Murray Water for our new water treatment plant to serve all of Swan Hill and surrounds. Um, which could be noisy, smelly, um, and not a great place to live next door to. Of course, we want it removed from the river front because we want the river front to be, um, more desirable and redeveloped for all community and commercial uses. There is also the balance of the planning scheme, which, um, does discuss at length the, uh, houses in rural zones not, not being, or shouldn't occur where they're not supporting agricultural use. Um, we have, you have heard from both the Catchment Management Authority and Lower Murray Water uh, on their need or, uh, on their concern about having another house built in a flood plain from the Catchment Management Authority's point of view and from Lower Murray Water about the need for a buffer around their, um, water treatment plant. Um, and then of course the balance of the planning scheme, which this report goes, goes through. There was also an objection from a nearby landowner as well, the caravan park on the highway, which is, uh, outlining the port. I urge council to seriously consider those issues, particularly the one around flooding, flooding. A precautionary principle should always apply. We shouldn't be putting people in more danger if we have the opportunity to not do that. Um, we do that for bushfires, we should be doing it for floods as well. So the recommendation is that a refusal be issued, and that's on page eighteen. A notice of refusal to grant a permit for the use and development of a dwelling. It's inconsistent with the state and local planning policies, particularly the flood plain management, land use compatibility in rural areas. It's inconsistent with the provisions of the farming zone and it's inconsistent with the land subject to inundation overlay. There is also a strong possibility of both these government agencies being prepared to go to VCAT to defend their desire for this not to occur. I'm not saying they will, but there is a strong possibility that one or both will.
Thank you, Miss Green. Questions, councillors? We don't, um, councillor McFay?
Um, Miss Green, how did this subdivision come about in the first place? Who enacted it and how many parcels did those other already?
So my understanding, Kate might correct, or I might let Kate answer, she's got research on this more than I have. So there was originally, I through you, Madam Mayor, there was originally five parcels of land. Um, Lower Murray Water, um, entered into an agreement with the landholder to purchase the size that they needed for their, um, proposed activity. And then there was two other balance slots created. Um, when Lower Murray Water were purchasing their land, they were, um, under the, um, belief and i- i- it was discussed with council officers that a section one seventy three agreement been placed on what became lot two, which is this subject land at twenty seven River Road. However, um, due to the mechanism that the land was acquired, that was unable to transpire. But, um, the understanding and indeed the advice from council officers way back, uh, at that time, to, from memory, and this might be taxing me a bit, is two thousand and twelve.
Ten years.
Yeah, um, that because of the size of the land located in the farming zone in a land subject to inundation, um, that a permit would not be granted for a dwelling there.
Well, could not be, doesn't mean it would not be.
Not yet.
Right. Um, so they subdivided into three lots, basically? Why then did they put water meters on both those other blocks?
Um, this has been looked into and because there probably was existing water supply to those allotments, because there was originally five, so allotments have to have water supply. Um, there would have been that connection provided or, or it would have just been, um,
Moved.
Yeah, it may well have been moved just to suit that property boundary. Because regardless of what was going to happen on the land, if it was to be used, say, for stock, they need obviously access to water, um, which would necessitated an additional, well, a water meter that would be normally associated with a parcel of land.
But you don't normally put town water for stock. Like there was the original block, five blocks, there was one house on that whole five plots. There was water to that. When they've subdivided, they put a town water meter on the second block. You don't normally do that for stock, so why would they be putting town water on that second block if they didn't expect someone to build it?
I would suggest it was done because I appreciate that, um, town water is, um, is an exceptional circumstance in these, uh, farming areas. But, um, given that if, if the water was to be provided to stock by way of tanks, um, if there wasn't someone on site to make sure that those, those, the tank was full enough or everything's working, it would just be normal that, uh, there would be a, a water supply to that land.
All right, and you mentioned, frankly, goes, Miss Mayor?
Please do, councillor McFay.
You mentioned it's a flood zone, that, and, oops, catch and manage? Land subject to inundation. And the North Central Catchment Management Authority set up to one point three metres. The block next to it where a water treatment plant is apparently going to go into the future. Obviously, that's, um, in the same land subject to inundation. Why is the North Catchment Management Authority claiming a water treatment plant to be built but objecting to a house to be built? They're both in the flood zone.
If you have a go and then I'll finish up.
Okay. I through you, Madam Mayor, um, it's understood that, uh, the, uh, the majority, um, of the actual treatment plants will be on a concrete plate that will raise it above the flood, that predicted flood, um, percentage. And possibly, um, to the deal.
Um, and just one final question. In the report, it mentions about future growth for the water treatment plant. But that was never mentioned in their objection letter. Where did that come from? Where did that come from?
What do you mean? If future?
Well, in the report, I'll read, it's considered that the introduction of an incompatible land use has a potential to inhibit the future growth and expansion of Lower Murray 提供的water treatment facility. They never mentioned that in their objection letter. So where did the future growth come from?
Well, we know that they're doing it in stages, so Lower Murray Water have advised me relatively recently that they'd be looking at doing stage one sooner rather than later and then it will be added to, so to its full potential, which would have been what they bought enough land for.
Yeah. And just another question, Miss May, the farming zone provisions, I talk about allowing farming land to be re-озанит or the key way of the other land. All the other land around that is taken up, so what's the possibility of five acres or two acres sort of a week becoming farming zone again? It's not, won't be a profitable, be able to be farmed in the area because there's nothing to complement it too.
It's difficult because when the land's subject to subdivision, it's a little bit...
Thank you councillor McPhee. Any other questions?
Oh, I've got a heap, actually, sorry.
Sorry?
I have got a few more too.
Sure.
Yeah. Just in relation to the conditions you're putting on to, if we do choose to grant a permit, the conditions that Golden Murray Water have put up, being, uh, two hundred and four hundred and fifteen, they all talk about a waste water and they refer it to our health department. Why are we putting those conditions in when it's already in under twelve? They're basically saying the same thing, so why are we putting all those conditions in there?
Sorry? I'll throw you, Madam Mayor, it's what happens when we receive a referral from a response from a referral authority, council is required to include those conditions verbatim and it's the same as when we receive a response from our environmental health department that we include those conditions verbatim. So I know there is duplication, but it's to make sure that both our environmental health department requirements are satisfied and that the referral authorities' needs are satisfied.
But as a council making a decision, you're saying you've got to put them in there, but we don't have to accept them?
You don't have to, you can choose not to.
And just one last one, the last three dot points, it's in the notes, which is basically saying from North Central Catchment Management Authority, they're saying the same thing that they put in their condition, so why are they there?
Are they, what's their, through you, Madam Mayor, once again, different referral authority notes really are just for information only, so that's why they've been included. It's just every permit that's issued that's affected by these variety of referral authorities will appear exactly like that.
And one last question in relation to number seven, any dwelling, the dwelling must be connected to a articulated potable water supply or have an alternative potable water supply that's stock and domestic, for storage domestic, as well as for fire climbing purposes. Is that put on every block, every houses, do they do that?
Through you, Madam Mayor, that's a requirement of the planning scheme.
Thank you.
Thank you councillor McPhee. Any other questions councillors? Can I have a motion councillors in that case?
I'll move a motion as per the recommendation to refuse.
Thank you councillor Jeffrey. Can I have a second up for that motion? No second up, then the motion lapses. Could I have a new motion councillors? Councillor McPhee?
I'll move a motion, the council, it's basically, you just take a few words out of the current recommendation, the council issues a permit for the use and development of a dwelling in the farming zone at number twenty-seven River Road, Swan Hill, with the conditions as per... Yeah, it's me.
Miss Green, it's to be a notice of decision to grant a planning permit because there's objections.
We will put that in there. So taking out issues and notice of approval, does that have to be?
Notice of decision to grant.
Notice of decision to grant.
I'll help you with it later.
So the rest of it, all the surrounding conditions as well?
Yep.
Yeah. Could I have a second up for that motion?
I'll second that motion.
Seconded councillor Young, would you like to speak to the motion councillor McPhee?
Yeah, thanks, Miss May. Look, planning is always a difficult environment to get involved in and always where there's controversy when there's an objection to a particular planning permit. This particular case, it's been going on for quite a while, Lower Murray Water, we're not stopping them building a water treatment plant, we want their water treatment plant built elsewhere to open up our riverfront. It's not about that. The situation is that this land was subdivided by Lower Murray Water. If they wanted a buffer zone there and then, they should have allowed for that in the initial subdivision. By subdividing a block off with five acres that no one's going to make any money on, no one can do anything with, is actually taking the money away from the original owner of that block. They chose not to buy it, but they told him, you can't sell it and you can't do anything with it. That's what they're basically saying. And any government agency shouldn't be doing that to the members or to the people of Victoria. That being said, yes, we've got to take into consideration all those issues and that. I take on board what Miss Green said about these two authorities may take us to VCAT, but I'm sure the applicant would have taken us to VCAT. That's not a decision for us to take into, under consideration when we make those decisions. I think it's appropriate that this land cannot be used for anything else. Council have let the person who's bought this, the new owner of it, to build a shed on there. And why ask him, why not at that time, say, look, are you maybe going to live there because you probably would have built the shed? This is a whole thing, we've got to, you're talking about planning, we've got to do the whole bit. We've allowed them to build a shed there, now we're saying you can't build a house. The shed was built there with, I can see from the writing from the outset, the intention of building a house in the end. So we shouldn't even let them go that far. I think in a de facto way, council have said, yes, you can build your shed, but no, you can't build your house. Well, no, stop and build the shed in the first place if that's the case. So I think it's appropriate that this land can't be used for anything else. The house can be built up above the flood levels as the neighbouring property is and I didn't worry about taking those conditions out, but I found a lot of conditions were duplicitous, to say the least, but I think it's appropriate that we do allow the applicant to build his own and we will have a lovely home in another area on that riverfront. Thank you.
Thank you councillor McPhee. Councillor Young?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a few issues in relation to this motion. Number one is I think we've already granted other properties in similar circumstances in that area to be able to develop and build houses and I think that's an argument that we should be allowing this one too. Second one is this land will never be used for farming, for serious farming, because it's not big enough and it's too close to the township. And the conditions that are in our condition paper here, I think will cover the issues that are concerned, so please, I have.
Thank you councillor Young. Any other speakers for the motion?
I'll speak against.
Okay, councillor Jeffrey?
Most of the issues have been laid out in the report and by the offices around the flooding and the impact on the farming zone. So I'll just talk against some of the items that have been put up. So Lower Murray Water did subdivide the farmland off because it is for farming purposes, because it is sown farming. The shed could be built because it's for farming purposes, because it's sown farming. Anyone who owns a farmland can build a nice big shed with an intention of building a house or hoping to, but they will build it under the farming zone, planning requirements. Look, I don't think we're wrong here, we've had, sort of, press mentioned allowing some others, but other councils, including myself, have spoken against building flood zones, in particular in the round this area of River Road and I don't think it's an appropriate planning decision to allow more houses in a vulnerable to the flood zone, but if they are inundated with water, it is a significant insurance loss on everyone here in Suri's property, regardless of how tall they are, how high, they build it above or below the flood zone as is listed in the recognits that both the water bodies are put in, so I'm against the motion.
Thank you councillor Jeffrey. Councillor McPhee, would you like to close?
Yeah, thanks, Miss May. Look, as I said before, each planning application, you've got to take on its merits. This is a situation where you've got two acres, five acres of land, isolated from anywhere, could never be used for farming into the future. I think it's appropriate that we allow someone to build on it. There are other areas, as councillor Young, other houses in the area, as councillor Young said, that have been granted permits to build above the flood zone and the water treatment plant themselves are building in a flood zone. So I don't think they had the opportunity. If they wanted a buffer zone, when they subdivided the land, they should have allowed for that and not left a vacant block of land there that the owner, the original owner, probably this person buying it, could do nothing with. So I think that's not an appropriate provision for the, any state government department to put that back on the owner property. Thank you.
Thank you councillor McPhee. We will take it to a vote. All those in favour of the motion? All those against the motion, the motion passes. Thank you. Could we switch councillor Moore, please? We'll just wait for councillor Moore to return to the meeting before moving on. Councillor Moore, a notice of decision to grant a permit was the resolution for the last report.
Yeah, madam.
Moving on to report B point two-two, point one seven, community and events grant policy review. Miss Green again.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Council has a community event grants policy which guides officers in determining and the administration of our grants system and also assists council as well. The report does detail the amendments and the improvements proposed to the policy, primarily to make it easier for both the grant applicant as well as officers and councillors in assessing the applications. There are six dot points on page thirty-one which outline the things that have been improved, so better definitions regarding eligibility criteria, clearly outlines what can and cannot be funded, redefined assessment factors and the list goes on. Largely, the policy hasn't changed though in terms of criteria for what sorts of grants we will issue. They are community and development fund, Youth and Development Scholarship and Events Support Fund has not changed. It is recommended that council adopts the amended community and events grant policy as attached to the report.
Thank you, Miss Green. Questions councillors?
I'll have a go, but I'll spare a recommendation.
Thank you councillor Jeffrey. Could I have a second up?
I'll second that.
Thank you councillor Young. Councillor Jeffrey, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yeah, just briefly, it is a further viable saved grant opportunity that our community and organisations use and it's the feedback that has been incorporated by the offices is feedback from the people that have applied in order to assess the climate as well as what we do in the instructions and how to do it. So we're continuing to welcome the feedback and encourage all community groups to apply this in the future.
Thank you councillor Jeffrey. Councillor Young?
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, councillor Jeffrey, I thought I was going to do this.
Thank you. Any other speakers for the motion? Councillor Moore?
Yes, councillor Young, this is one of the most pleasing aspects of these grants, one of the most pleasing aspects of council's operations, just to see the likes of the Food and Wine Festival, other events that we support. The Youth and Development Scholarship is such so fantastic for young people who are most deserving of these. And the Events Support Funds, which often gets new events up and going just for the first few years and then they're up and running. It's really pleasing to see that, community satisfaction in the groups and the farming activities and all the stuff that it provides, fantastic.
Thank you councillor Moore. Any other speakers for the motion? Councillor McPhee?
Look, community and events grants, it's a great way council can support the smaller communities right around our municipality with events and the opportunity like that. As per one of our previous reports, the first one, we can rise to sales, if we went along that line, these are the sort of programs that would suck because we've got to take money away from these sort of things to implement these other ones. That's why I voted in it, and that's why these things are more important. You get a little bit of economic value from supporting these events and we don't want to lose this one. Thank you.
Thank you councillor McPhee. Councillor Jeffrey, would you like to close the argument?
Okay.
Then we will take it to a vote. All those in favour of the motion, passed unanimously. B point twenty-two point one eight, public art policy. Mr Myers, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Councillors, I'm presenting to you today the updated, very minor changes to the public art policy and also you'll note included in the document, just for your information, is a copy of the public art plan, aspects of which we'll be using as officer level. Council first adopted its first public art policy in twenty seventeen and during the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty financial year, a project took place between the Art Gallery and Economic Development Teams to look at the operational document behind it and we availed ourselves of the opportunity to update the policy as well, better terminology and definitions. So councillors, presented on page forty-seven is the updated public art policy for your endorsement, unless you'd like to make any changes.
Thank you, Mr Myers. Any questions councillors? Councillor McPhee?
Yes, Mr Myers, in relation to the discussion we've had previously, this report coming to council, I actually asked about in the plan, like it says in the policy, that the public art plan provides guidelines for the lifetime of the public art, but there's no actually reference in the plan to the lifetime. So what are we going to do about that?
So although it's not part of the endorsement here through you, Mayor, councillor McPhee, we've noted that, we're actually already reviewing aspects of the plan because this plan is effectively two years old since it was pulled together. And we've also had some changes in personnel in some of the key areas in council that we consulted, so we'll be making tweaks to the plan. We highlighted that and I think two other areas we found from other officers looking at it as well, where there might be gaps. So the operational document will be updated as we use it. Yep.
Thank you. Any other questions councillors? Can I have a motion then councillors? Councillor McPhee?
I'll move a motion as per the recommendation.
Thank you. And a second up, councillor Jeffrey. Would you like to speak to the motion?
Yeah, just quickly, because, Mayor, public art or art in general creates a lot of discussion within the community. We all have our different views on what art is and what art should be, but that itself is what art is about. It's to create discussion and I do note that the recommendations only note the public art plan as we're not endorsing it, so that recommendation is about having a lifetime in front of public art. It's like a street sign, if you live in there for too long, people become oblivious to it. It's about being able to change and move them around the municipality so the whole municipality can share in the public art. I think that's a problem that we do update that plan on occasions and I think it does create discussion within the community and debate, which is great. Thank you.
Thank you councillor McPhee. Councillor Jeffrey?
Yeah, thank you. I fully support the review and the update of the policy and this is a really good area for our community groups to be, add value and add further opportunities to be able to do that, into the stock of food, they can, but it's had some good outcomes for our municipality, some artworks there, Riverside Park up here and up the drop of ours and a few bits of business arts and, um, have other locations.
Thank you councillor Jeffrey. Any other speakers for the motion? Councillor Moore?
Thanks, Mayor Benham. Yeah, look, public art is probably something that's been lacking a little in our municipality over the years. It's fantastic to see that this policy is updated and hopefully it'll lead to much more public art in the future. It's part of the vibrancy of our community, it's a reflection of a lot of times of who we are and where we've come from and where we... Um, it's a reflection of, uh, a lot of, a lot of times of who we are and where we've come from, um, and where we, where we could go. So I'm, I'm very glad to see, to endorse, uh, this policy as we go forward. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Moore. Any other speakers for the motion? Would you like to close the argument, councillor Mcfee?
No, I'll just speak.
Then we'll take it to a vote. To all those in favour, passed unanimously.
Uh, Miss Mayor, the next three items are all policy, they're all about just adopting those policies. Can I move that we had, do that in block?
You can move that we do that in block. Can I have a second up? Councillor Moore was first. Councillor Moore, a second up?
So we're going to move them all as a block. Yeah?
I'm just...
It's three, it's three items, is that right?
Yeah, so community engagement, civic receptions and travel by councillors' policy and procedure. So Helen is the responsible officer.
Um, I think Bruce is doing that the most.
I was covering the acting director of corporate services for the first one. And I think the next, the following to, uh, the remit of the CEO. So...
Madam Mayor, look, I'll move the motion. I think they, we should take it as read, there's very little charge if you need to the policies. It's about bringing me on with the local government act twenty twenty, that's what it's all about. So I'm moving motion that we, um, um, is it do, do adopt, adopt the policies as presented.
Thank you, councillor Mcfee. Seconded for those. Thank you, councillor Jeffrey. Would you like to speak to the motion, councillor Mcfee?
Yeah, look, this is just, um, procedural matters, Miss Mayor. As I said, it's about bringing policies up to date with the local government act two thousand and twenty, the new act. Um, there's no great change in any of these and I think it's just a, um, procedural matter, basically.
Thank you, councillor Mcfee. Councillor Jeffrey, anything to add?
No, nothing.
We'll take it to a vote. All those in favour, passed unanimously. Three, bringing us to report B twenty-two point two-two, appointment of an acting chief executive officer. Miss Carver, please.
Thank you very much, Mayor Jade. Um, this is a straightforward one. I, I will be taking some leave, uh, for two weeks in late March, early April and under the local government act. When a vacancy arises or the CEO is unable to perform the duties of the office of the CEO, i.e. they're on leave, um, council needs to determine who will be the, um, acting CEO in their absence. Um, so council has a number of offices at the direct level three substantive directors. Um, so council is invited to nominate a short-term acting CEO commencing Friday, the twenty-fifth of March. And continuing in that role till, um, Friday, the eighth of April.
Thank you. Questions, councillors? No questions? Councillor Jeffrey?
I'll move that be the point. So Bruce Myers as acting short-term acting CEO for the period in the recommendation.
Thank you, councillor Jeffrey. Can I have a second up for that motion?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Councillor Mcfee, would you like to speak to the motion?
Just, just a minute, secretary. After the word of points, just change the motion. Points Bruce, so you take that out. Points Bruce Myers.
Yeah.
Again, one of the directors. Bruce Myers, I think, delete it all to be a short, after to be a short term acting CEO.
Councillor Jeffrey, would you like to speak to the motion?
Uh, yeah, thank you. The committee have a team of board of directors, um, and they've just made up positions instead. Share it around, uh, Director Green was acting last time, um, and so just shared it around just to help with that extra workload, returning to departments and, um, the extra stress that it adds to the job and everything that we have going on in the council is good to share it around. Um, the director of arts and to develop the two next.
Thank you. Councillor Mcfee, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yeah, well, um, Miss Mayor, um, look, the sharing it around thing, I don't agree with sharing anything around. I guess person's got to be appropriate for the job and capable of doing the job. Um, the act that, as it currently stands, is that we've got to, council have got to nominate someone. But I think in the future, we need to look at this and see if there's any other way around it. Because as councillors, we're unaware of what the director's work, current workload is really and how their performance is. This is more of an operational issue. I think we need to pursue this through LMOMV and other avenues. As a result of this motion, I'm happy to support, um, Mr. Myers in this position. And as you say, any other directors have been the acting CEO in the, in the, in the past. So they're all capable of doing the job. But I think it's something that we need to look at, um, and so that the CEO can have the power to. For that's such a short time, they should be able to implement this, um, decision and not have to come to council. That's what we have to look at. But as it stands currently, we've got to make a decision now. And I'm happy to support Mr. Myers as the acting CEO for that period.
Thank you, councillor Mcfee. Any other speakers for the motion? Any speakers against the motion? We'll take it to a vote. All those in favour, passed unanimously. Section C, decisions which need action and verification.
Uh, I believe that's a procedural matter, but the sign and seal list is there for councillors to bruise and...
There's no question, Madam Mayor, I'll move the, recommend that. Move the motion as per the recommendations, Commissioner.
Thank you, councillor Mcfee and seconded councillor Young. Do you need to speak to the motion?
Decision.
All those in favour, thank you, passed unanimously. C twenty-two point four, councillor assemblies, record of attendance and agenda items.
Uh, just one question. Um, the councillors that have had leave of absences, should they be known as on a leave of absence rather than an apology?
Yes.
Because that's then caps it differently than I and your approach. So that councillor Young and councillor King are both paying for all on leave of absences.
Yes, we'll adjust that.
I'm not sure of the date script. If you could have that for it to not be just...
It's quite distinct the leave of absence, which council granted in those cases.
That was happening as to, uh...
So we just change the heading on apologies to leave of absence for, um, February, first of March, uh, we'll have to adjust so that councillor Young and councillor King were on leave of absence and councillor, um, McPhee and Chris Jeffrey were apologies.
So the motion can be for council. Note the contents of the report with corrections?
All those councillors on leave of absence.
On leave of absence and then, um, over the page for the eighth of March would be leave of absence for councillors to obtain. Apologies for councillor's issues.
That one. Well, happy to move that.
Happy to move that. I have a second just for that motion. Councillor Mcfee, thank you. Do you wish to speak to the motion, councillor Jeffrey? Councillor Mcfee, all those in favour? Thank you, passed unanimously. Section D, notices of motion, D point two-two point two, the Swan Hill Bridge. Councillor Mcfee, thank you.
Yeah, well, we've all got the motion in front of us, so I'll move that the council write to all those people requesting they do everything possible to expedite the building of a new bridge at Swan Hill.
By the second up, councillor Jeffrey, would you like to speak further to the motion, councillor Mcfee?
Yeah, look, thanks, Miss Mayor. I'm not going to go through the preamble. Everyone can read the preamble. Everyone knows a bit of the history of where we've been with our bridge. This has been going on well before I went on council, a new bridge for Swan Hill. And it's disappointing that even now, I think it was the twenty-fourth of, um, last month, they've had a site visit from Transport for New South Wales. They're still looking at the bloody site. Get on with building a bridge. This is, they're making excuses. They're procrastinating. I just want all these, um, members of parliament to actually, get the bureaucrats to build the bridge. Stop talking about it and let's build it. We need a new bridge for both sides of the river to, um, benefit economically. And it has been highlighted in the Murray River Strategy that it is the number one priority for Swan, for the Murray River as far as bridges go. We don't want to be able to, um, gizunk with someone else, another bridge. Build our bridge and do it sooner. We've already got sixty million dollars of federal money sitting there to build it. So it shouldn't be that hard. Get on with it.
Thank you, councillor Mcfee. Councillor Jeffrey, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yeah, I fully agree with the motion, uh, the preamble of what councillor Mcfee is saying. And it's quite, it's just calling out alarm that those people that I'm charged with approaching to, um, I don't know whether it's an able to get there, but say there could be another five years before they come up with the engine to design. Fire the gas, but we're still so early in, in the process, but don't come to consultation, but they can't get to, to do anything. So we need the bureaucrats to, to get a move on and get those engineering plans done so it can be fully funded. And, um, then get it fully funded. And we should, we should be now, we should be this year because we've got federal and state funding to get the bridge fully funded. If it doesn't happen, it will be another three, four years at the next stage of the journey before, uh, the candidates in a running will pluck away. That's the only time they're going to get it. So if they don't have it done now, we're going to miss the boat. That's my, that's probably it. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Jeffrey. Any other speakers for the motion? Councillor Young?
I was just going to mention, thank you, Madam Mayor, that, um, maybe it's worth mentioning also in the letter, um, the, the committee that we had, the name escapes me what it was, Liz. You know, the committee that we had, the, all the district councils, um, that used to meet all the time and they made it number one priority. And that was Wadur, there was all the different councils, what's the name?
Central Murray Regional Transport Forum.
That one, yes. Yeah, it might be worth mentioning. Yeah, it was number one priority out of all the councils.
Any other speakers for the motion? Councillor Moore?
Thank you, Madam Mayor Benham. Um, this site has been going on for at least fifty years. And to be at that meeting, a site visit, uh, several weeks ago, was hugely disappointing. In that it felt like we'd gone backwards, not forwards. Um, to start talking about the heritage listing of the bridge, which I thought was resolved, um, the, um, another, another, some other issues, um, we did bring up the possibility that there were, the, uh, we might get this up for Yarrawanga who are desperate for a bridge as well. And not to mention the other bridge in our municipality, the Tuli Buck Bridge, which also needs funding and building. But through several studies, Swan Hill has come out as number one for now. So it is really, as councillor Mcfee, as president of the joint committee, has brought this motion forward, really do need some action because I felt like we'd, we'd actually gone backwards. Um, this was the team that's supposed to design and build the bridge, but, uh, we really need action and fast. Uh, I'm led to believe at that meeting, one of the biggest hurdles was VicTrak. Um, having a lot of difficulty with VicTrak on the Victorian side in getting where the starting to work with the bridge is going to be for, in the, in the first place. So, um, I don't know whether VicTrak are mentioned in this letter, uh, that we're writing, but I'm sure we need to be writing to them directly and the minister, um, the Victorian minister there as well. And I don't know who exactly that is, um, but we need action, um, we need resolution, we need VicTrak at the table to resolve exactly what land the, the bridge can be built on and what land can't be to develop so to, um, so they can get moving on it. So anyway, um, yep, um, very wholeheartedly support this motion. We just need action.
Thank you, councillor Moore. Councillor Mcfee, would you like to close the debate?
I'll just, I'll only close it with my last, um, sentence in the preamble was Swan Hill was waited far too long for a new bridge. It's time for action, not words or excuses. Let's build the bridge.
Thank you, councillor Mcfee. All those in favour of the motion? Passed unanimously. And that brings us to any foreshadowed items?
There are none.
There are none. Any urgent items in section F?
There are none.
Section G, to consider on councillor Ford, there are none. Section H, in camera items?
There are none.
Terrific. And that brings us to the end of today's meeting. I declare the meeting closed at three thirteen PM. Oh, sorry, councillor Ford, I did miss that. I haven't done mine. Maybe that's why it was... So councillor Ford, who would like to go first?
I haven't done mine on that.
No. Councillor Mcfee?
Yeah, look, I've submitted mine. Um, this one thing I will, um, mention was the Mines' Common Art Exhibition, Art and Furor Exhibition down at the Catalina. It was well received. It's amazing how many talented people we've got and artists we've got around our municipality. And I'm definitely not one of them.
It's great to see your interest in art this meeting, councillor Mcfee. Councillor Moore?
Yeah, uh, twenty-third, Central Ruin Greenhouse Alliance, uh, Zoom meeting and on the twenty-fourth, O'Neil West Resource Recovery Group meeting and of course, and councillor Mcfee mentioned the Lions Club art exhibition. Absolutely fantastic. Once again, I've really, um, um, got onto the right, um, on the other day. It's just such a great evening in, in the, in amongst all the artefacts of the flying boats. Fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Moore. Councillor Jeffrey?
Nothing to report. Thank you.
Thank you. And councillor Young, yours will be submitted and may well be read in a minute, as will mine. So now we'll move on and declare the meeting closed at three fourteen PM.